Good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for the Pocagin Water and Sewer Project Public Hearing. A few introductions we'd like to do around the table here. Jill Curry with Curry and Associates, Doug Marv, where did Doug get off to? Doug's right around the corner, he'll be joining us. Lori Young with Curry and Associate, Brian Herbert, the Clerk of the City of Angola, I'm Dave Martin, the Mayor, Manda Kope, our City Engineer, Ted Bowman, the Park Superintendent for the DNR at the Pocagin State Park, and we have Nathan Brune with Westler Engineering. They'll make a short presentation, show you what the program is. I think they have some frequently asked questions and answers, and then we will take public comment. When you give public comment, please step up to the podium, state your name and your address if you would, please. We'll try to be respectful of everyone's time and get through this information as quickly and as accurately as we possibly can and make sure everybody's questions are answered. With that, Lori, would you like to lead off this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Hello. Yeah, I'm Lori Young, Engineer with Curry and Associates, and I just wanted to start out with a little bit of background on this project. So, the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, working with the Indiana Finance Authority, is working to where feasible, look for opportunities to regionalize utilities, water and sewer, so that, in this case, they can partner with City of Angola to provide drinking water and wastewater treatment, because currently, the parks are doing those activities, they're running operating treatment plants, wells, water treatment, and it's challenging for the park properties to do that and takes away from the other things that they're doing. So, the Indiana Finance Authority and State Revolving Fund in partnership with DNR commissioned these studies that were holding this preliminary engineering report for the drinking water project and for the wastewater project, for these utility improvements that would allow, provide for this connection. So, tonight, this public hearing is a requirement of the funding agency, so there will be a comment period following that I'll mention again at the end. So, the public hearing was advertised 10 days in advance. The preliminary engineering reports were available for review if anybody wanted to take a look at those. We're just going to give a high-level overview of the project tonight. If you have any specific questions, you can ask them later, or you can speak with us individually. So, just kind of some additional information with respect to funding, the Indiana Finance Authority would be funding the project for all the infrastructure improvements necessary to serve Pocagin and Angola as a recreation area. So, the ratepayers of the City of Angola would not be bearing any of that burden. In addition, then, the city would own and operate the infrastructure outside of the park property, so nothing within the DNR properties, however, the other infrastructure would be dedicated to the city. So, Curry and Associates, our team is working on the drinking water portion. Westler is working on the wastewater portion. So, just kind of some general information, the City of Angola has existing wells and water treatment plants with excess capacity adequate to serve the needs of Pocagin and Trine. So, they have that excess capacity, and we have a water demand of between 30,000 and 40,000 gallons per day, sometimes lower if there's peak days in the high usage time. But, in the preliminary engineering report, we've evaluated the water flows and such, and have determined, and Angola's in agreement, that they have capacity to provide that service. The project consists of a new water transmission main from County Road 300 north going on north to 400, and then on up north past Trine or to Trine, State Recreation Area, and then we'll also go west along County Road 400, and then kind of a cross-country route to get to the park. And I think probably most of you are somewhat familiar with that from mailings that we've sent out previously. There are also a couple of projects that Angola will be completing along with this for rehabilitation of two water storage tanks in conjunction with the project. Nathan, if you'd like to share a little bit about the wastewater?
Sure. Yeah, so similar to the water on that side of things, the city also has sufficient capacity at their wastewater treatment plant. As you can see in your handout here, the plant currently has an average daily flow of 1.7 million gallons a day and 3.5 million gallons a day peak. The current daily average is approximately 1.25 million gallons a day. Wastewater flows from Pocagin and Trine State Recreational combined average approximately 20,000 gallons a day throughout the year. With these added flows, the average flows are expected to increase to only about 1.27 million gallons a day. So, not, again, it depends on through the year how much the flows vary, but that's an average amount that we're expecting to pump from Pocagin and Trine south to the city's treatment plant here. And then, as Lori mentioned a little bit, it proposes, the project proposes replacing existing gravity sewers and low-pressure system within the park, and then at Trine, that system is currently on septic tanks, so that will be adding sewers at that location. And then, all flows will be sent to a new lift station, which we'll get figures here in a little bit, near the intersection of West 400 North and I-69, and then their force main will be routed along the west side of 127, near the Ball Sports Academy there, north of the city, to discharge into the city's wastewater system. So, that's kind of the gist of the wastewater side of this project.
Generally, for permits, there will be IDAM construction permits for both drinking water and wastewater. End dot construction permits will be doing some work in the end dot right-of-way, will be crossing the end dot right-of-way in some locations, also working with County Highway Department and others. Easements, and this is probably one of the big reasons that many of you are here this evening, we are pursuing easements along 127 in particular. We initially were looking at easements along 400. I think we're down to probably just one easement that we still need along County Road 400. We've kind of decided to move those into the road due to some conflicting conflicts with other existing utilities there. So, kind of, the progress of that, the archaeological investigations are wrapping up. I think they've gotten everything done outside of the park. We'll be working inside the park. We have, we'll also be doing wetland investigation, which will be starting soon, or delineation, and then there will be some geotechnical investigation work being done. So, you may see a geotechnical firm out doing some soil borings in the area. Those will all be in the right-of-way along roadways.
So, I will say, those of you that live on West County Road 400 north, and you did get an easement exhibit, and it showed it potentially on your property, that's what Lori just said, is it did shift, and we're looking at actually putting the utilities in the roadway because of the conflicting other utilities and just some of the tight spacing there. So, we can talk to you individually about some of those individual properties afterwards, or answer questions here shortly, too.
So, just kind of the progress of that, we're working with local surveyor, local appraiser, and title companies. So, for the easements that we do require, we'll have those easement documents drawn up with appraisals that hopefully soon we'll be sending more detailed information out in those locations where we do need easements. We've been able to meet with several people, we appreciate that. If we haven't met with you and you'd like to meet with us to look at easement concerns, we'll be here after the meeting and be happy to talk with you. And then, also, if it's something that, you know, would be worthwhile to meet on-site, we're certainly available to make those appointments as well. Cost estimates, you can see on the handout, kind of the ranges. These are the very significant investment for the state for this project. Construction, or kind of the next steps in the schedule. So, there's a number of things kind of going on at the same time to get us to the point of being able to bid the project. So, we are hoping to receive bids in January of 2025, with an anticipated loan closing in March, and then contract award would likely be March to April of next year. So, it would be beginning construction, you know, late spring, early summer. Now, I will say, that's tentative schedule. We're still working through, especially with the state and the funding and tying all those things down, but this is kind of our best estimate on schedule right now. Public comments, as I mentioned before, you're welcome to comment tonight, and then also, if there's any written comments, if anyone thinks of something afterwards that you'd like to file. What happens with the meeting minutes from this meeting and any public comments received, that all is combined together with the information that goes to the funding agency, and they do review all those things. So, that's kind of the process for that. The next thing we'd like to do is kind of go through some question-answer, kind of commonly asked questions, and Jill will kind of walk through some of those to help answer some.
So, I've spoken with a few of you on the phone, and I kind of tracked a few common questions we've had over the last several weeks that we wanted to make sure to address. I did have a question, somebody asked if this entire area was planned to be annexed by the city. The city does not have any immediate plans for annexation. This project truly just solely came about in order to serve the two IDNR properties with drinking water, wastewater. As Lori mentioned, there's several state park properties around the state where this type of project has been taking place, coordination with a town or local city or town, coordinating with a DNR property. So, that is the sole purpose of the project. Now, sanitary sewer-specific questions we've received. Quite a few folks asked if you can connect to the City of Angola as opposed to the Regional Sewer District. And I explained a little bit on the phone, the city, the Regional Sewer District, because of some of their financing, typically when they have a specific financing source, they can secure their service area. So, a majority of the folks along this route are within what the Regional Sewer District would determine is their service area. And so, unless they, for some reason, would be willing to give you up as a customer, and most of you probably know if you're in their service area, because you've probably been in communication with them, or you already have a grinder facility at your property, or have already been in that process with them, we don't believe that that's probably feasible, but it would have to be something that you could talk to them about and see, but we don't know about that at this point. So, I kind of explained that to a few of you on the phone. So, typically, like I said, their funding source allows them to completely secure their service area in order to pay back loans that they have, because they have identified those customers as those fees as helping them pay back loans that they have to the federal government. So, am I required to hook on? So, if you are currently not part of the Regional Sewer District area, are you required to hook on? And the city is not requiring anyone to hook on. You're not required to hook onto the sewer extension, and typically the County Health Department here has not historically required property owners within that 300-foot area from this new sewer to hook on unless your septic system is failing for some reason. So, that's not been historically part of what the County Health Department does here in Steben County. Also, none of this funding is being paid back through any user fees, so there's no reason that Angola would require anyone to hook onto either the sanitary sewer or the drinking water system. So, no one is required, this is specific to sanitary sewer, but it's the same answer for drinking water as well. What fees would apply if you do want to connect to the sewer? So, the city is in conversation about connection fees and/or waivers or other incentives for those that would want to connect to either the sanitary sewer or drinking water. And so, they're currently making some of those decisions, and we'll be in contact with those of you along the route. And I think if you are interested, if you would maybe come, make sure that one of us here knows. I'm Jill Curry. Most of you have my email, but it's jill@recurry.com. Most of you who received a letter would have that. Make sure we know of your interests so that we can be planning for that appropriately. Probably, for those of you I do have contact information for, as we send out final communications, I'll probably be asking you anyway, but we would want to know, those of you that aren't interested, to let us know and make sure we have that planned for if possible. Those of you that would be eligible in the non-sewer district service area and wanting to connect to sewer, you would be responsible for any of septic system abandonment costs on your own, and typically, your grinder costs, that would all be privately owned, typically as a sanitary sewer customer of the city. That's, so the city could work with you and make sure you know that, but there would be a lot of those private costs that would be beyond the private individual. Questions about sanitary sewer this time, I'll go over to drinking water. There will be questions at the end, too, but if there's anything immediate about any of those. And then, again, drinking water, you're not required to hook on, and the city is working through any waivers of any fees, or if there would be a period of time, if you wanted to hook on within a certain period of time, if any portion of those fees could be waived to hook onto the city's drinking water extension here. Again, if you are going to abandon a well, and your private service line to hook onto the city is typically at your cost as a private property owner. So, we do have one community who had asked, and I know there's several, maybe adjacent nearby communities that have maybe their own community well system, those type of customers, they are looking at probably having just one connection to that community, and that community would maintain their own distribution system, continue to maintain their own distribution system. So, I can talk, I know some of you have asked, and I'll follow some of you later that have asked about that specifically, but the city is not looking at taking over any water mains that are currently out in smaller individual community distribution systems. They would be looking at just one connection point to those maybe bulk water customers that are a community system. Does that make sense? Hopefully, those, and then we had a few questions that are more specific to design here, and I think we could probably look at the maps to show you more specifically along the routes. But someone asked about what types of excavation will be happening along the routes, and how will the water main and sewer main be installed along the different routes? So, I don't know, Lori, if you kind of want to highlight some of that information?
It'll be a combination of open cut with excavated trench, and then also, there will be some areas of horizontal directional drilling, or you may hear it called directional boring, which is a trenchless method. So, there are certain environmentally sensitive areas that will have to directional drill through. There's other areas that will directional drill to avoid impact on trails and sidewalks and driveways, those kinds of things. And there may, so, kind of along 127, I think it's going to be a combination of open cut and directional drilling. Along 127, and really, if that's the main place, we'll cross driveways. We will directional drill under driveways to keep those driveways open and accessible. So, that'll be kind of the standard practice for driveways.
Yeah. And again, she'd already mentioned that, County Road West 400 North, I think we're still going to be working with the County Highway Department to finalize, you know, installation there, but potentially, you know?
Yeah, we anticipate that will likely be directionally drilled primarily to keep, to minimize the impact on the road and also to, for maintenance of traffic as much as possible. I know it's kind of a narrow road, and we'll probably try and work, try and hit that in the off-season, I guess, maybe is the best way to say that. Abandon advised me that, you know, that there's, you know, peak season, there's a lot of traffic back there. So, to the extent possible, we will do that. And, you know, also through this process, if there's anything, you know, concerns that you have, if we're seeking an easement on your property, there's things we can try to work around, or things that we should know. You know, I know that we've been able to meet with some people and help, you've been able to help educate us about things that maybe aren't apparent on the aerial, or that didn't necessarily get picked up in the survey, septic systems and the like, so, yeah.
And then, fire hydrants. Will fire hydrants be installed, and what will the spacing be for hydrants?
So, along County Road 400 north, the fire hydrants will be installed at every 500 feet, and that's kind of the standard for the city. Along 127, because there's long stretches without much there, approx, we're thinking, we'll put in provisions for every 500 feet, but probably actually install hydrants maybe every 1,500 feet. But, in areas where we're close to development or housing and such, we'll have one there. So, there'll be provisions long-term as if, when more development occurs along 127, that the hydrants are ready to put in, but they won't, they won't be spaced that closely in general. But, on 400, because of the residential development that's already there through that area, that we will put some more extra hydrants in.
Ready for public comment?
Yes.
All right, we'll open the floor up for public comment and questions. Like I said earlier, please make your way up to the podium, state your name and address. This is a public meeting and is being recorded, just be aware of that, but we want to hear whatever you have to say and answer whatever questions you have. So, with that, we will open it up to the floor. Anybody want to be number one at the mic tonight?
Yeah, I'll get it started. My name's Tom Blackburn. I'm the man without the bike, by the way. 435 Lane, 150 Lake James. I'm actually on the, you know, part of Glenire Beach, but I'm on the front side. So, it doesn't really affect me tremendously, but my question is, why wasn't decided to go down 400 north rather than going down the road that goes into the park? Distance-wise, it's pretty much the same, is it not?
There are some other utilities existing along that main line, or along the road into the park, and that was one of the issues that we looked at. And there were, there were some other, I mean, I think other utilities in that area was kind of the primary reason.
And the wellhouse near the inn is actually right there near the inn, so for water, drinking water purposes, it's a slightly more direct route to go from the south, as opposed to going further north to come back down to get to the wellhouse, the focus of wellhouses.
Well, they have already put utilities in across their, across that wetlands. And how wide does your water line and sewer line, how far apart, how far apart do they have to be? 30 feet?
The sewer and water need to be 10 feet apart.
So, they need to be 10 feet apart, and you're going to run those, and if you look at that, you're going to run next to the dam there at Lake Charles?
West.
West, pretty close to it. Then, all the way beyond that, when you go a very short distance, maybe 25 yards, the rest of it is all wetlands. It's wet all year. Now, I don't know a lot about construction, but I don't think you can bore a 10-foot pipe through there, because when you have to pull it back out, it's all going to sink back in right away. I don't know.
Yeah, we, the wetland areas can be directionally drilled, and so, and there's, that was another, there's wetlands along each side of the road that goes into the park, too. So, there's kind of no avoiding wetland areas.
But, there's a much wider space there. You're going right through them. You're going to have to go right through the wetlands there.
Yes, we are.
Which that concerns me, because can you give me 100% guarantee that that sewer line won't break or won't leak? Because if it leaks, it's going to be right into Lake James, because that's where all that, all that goes is right into the lake, right there, right by many of our cottages. And that concerns me, okay?
Appreciate your concern.
Whereas, if it went up the other way, at least it would be a little bit further And in the original, it doesn't matter, but in this handout, it said, it said, it didn't say it was going on 400 north, I don't believe, awful plain print, but that I got off the Angola site. But, I saw the map, so I know where it's going. My other thing is, there's quite an elevation change there. So, you're going to have to have several pumping stations, correct?
No. So, for the water, there's no pumping stations required.
Right, but I mean for the sewer.
For the sewer, yeah, there's a number of, it's a low-pressure, and Nathan, maybe I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, so within Pocagin State Park, there are approximately 25 low-pressure grinder stations that will be placed at the camp sites, et cetera. But, those essentially all work together to pump to this main lift station at 469 there. So...
You're going to pump all the way up that hill, all the way from the park, under the wetlands, all the way up that elevation?
Yes, yep, we've provided those, yep, elevations in our modeling software, and the pumps will work in conjunction to get to that point.
So, if you do spring a lake, you're going to get all that back in before you even get it stopped?
Well, yeah, I mean, we will look into that further. I, yeah, definitely understand your fight on this, absolutely.
I think that's a big concern.
Yeah.
And I would think the DNR would be concerned about that, too. I mean, I know they want water and sewer, and I agree, they need it.
Yeah.
But, I just think it would be more responsible to go in the other road, because there's not wetlands that close, but not, you're going under wetlands.
I mean, we would have to be going under them, but just a couple other comments I have. You know, as we're working through the final design, one of the concepts that we are considering is whether or not to case, to put a casing in under the, through that bore, so basically be a pipe within a pipe, and that's one option that is under consideration. The other thing I would mention, I mean, and I, you have a valid concern. I totally appreciate your concern, and I'm not, I'm not dismissing it. So, the type of pipe material is HDPE. It's a fused pipe such that it's not, essentially, it's no joints, and it has the more flexibility than a, more of a jointed rigid pipe.
But, it still is going to have joints. It's still going to be connected.
It's actually, well, basically fused welded, so it makes a...
And it still can leak. You can't guarantee me 100% that it's not going to leak.
Right. I can't guarantee you that.
And I think that's something that environmental people would need to consider, because that, it's right there. I mean, the lake's right, Lake James is right there on that part that you'll go right underneath.
Sure. No, I appreciate, I appreciate the concern with that.
Okay, thank you.
Lori, is it safe to say that the Regional Waste District also has numerous sites around the county that are in the same situation?
You know, I apologize, I'm not familiar with their system and where their design is, but I would, just the nature of the landscape, the territory, I would, I would expect that they likely do have some, and I think that, I don't know if anybody else has more experience with that, but I think that they very likely do.
They do. I mean, even mine in my front yard, right on the lake. I understand that, but we're putting another risk and a higher volume, probably. Also, because it's new, you know, I'm just suggesting that we go the other way instead of, I'm not suggesting don't do it. I think it's great. I just would rather see it go the other way if at all possible. I guess that's it. There was a discussion at one time about hooking on to the Regional Waste District. Somehow, that got messed up. I don't know. I read a little bit about it, but, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just have one little question.
Name and address, please.
My name is Mary Beth Thomas. I live on 195 Lane 150B, Lake James. I kind of live where Tom is, on Glenire Beach, and I'm a little concerned about you, your construction with tearing up 400 north, which is a very narrow road, and then you're going to put sewer lines and water lines, too, or am I understanding that? Now, there aren't many of us, but there are several of us who live there year-round, so I want to be assured that at all times... so I want to be assured that at all times, we will have in egress and ingress. I go to work every day, I want to make sure I could get there, and I don't want to be held up by construction. I want it to be done in such a way, I mean, I agree with Tom, though, I think it should go the other way rather, personally, especially since you're right there at 469, just you're going to go right over the hill, go right down, that would be so much easier, I believe. But anyway, getting back to my original point, is I want to make sure that if you decide to proceed with this, that we always have access to get to our homes and from our homes without any inconveniences. Because there are some of us who are a little bit older and might need emergent care, and I want that to be taken into consideration also. I work in a physician's office, and I know what goes on and what needs to be done in this community, and I want to make sure that is seriously considered.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Anybody else?
I'm James Summers, 75 Lane 150C, Lake James, also in Glenire. You get into Glenire a bunch, I'm sorry. Other question, you said, as far as, we're interested in hooking up to the water and learning about that if it's possible, and what I've heard just now is that you would only hook up to our pump house and then let the rest be our problem. That doesn't exactly solve our problem. We have an aging water system. We have, some of us are interested in connecting directly to your water line, which is only going to be a few hundred feet away. So what is your reason why you don't want to connect individual cottages to the water line?
Yeah, I'll answer. The simple reason, it's not the city limits. So typically residential homes, we serve within our corporate boundaries. So obviously, this is a project that goes beyond our corporate boundaries, but it's designed to serve the state parks. So this would be available for you as a community, should you want to come as a community and get city water, but we don't have the services and the manpower and the capacity to add cottages to our workload.
They're homes, they're not cottages. We live there year-round, you know?
He called them cottages.
I'm clarifying, homes.
My name is Jeff Deal, and I live at 75 Lane 150A, Lake James. And so I'm in the same general area as Glenire, Glenire Anics area. And I've met with Lori and Doug out at our space and so forth, and we're going to kind of go across a piece of property and along the back of it, on into the park. And I'll say, as a whole, I'm very supportive of the project. I think the park is a tool to our community, to our state, you know, and whatever we can do to help facilitate that, I'm an advocate of. I think it's a positive thing that the city is investing in it, to reach out, to expand their capabilities, to services, you know, a community that's growing, is a sound, healthy community. That being said, I've got a couple of initial, what I want to say to be requests or concerns. Number one, any questions that I've got or whatnot, who do I address those to? Is it Curry Engineering, or the City of Angola, or?
We've been taking the lead on the East Mass and the resident correspondence, so it's fine with me, I think, and we basically funnel everything to Amanda as well, and you know, relevant questions related to the city. So I think we're comfortable with you sending that through us, but if you, for whatever reason, would prefer to go direct to the city, that's fine as well.
Well, and I mean, and I know all these folks, and they're all great, you know, but if the proper path is through Curry, I think that's a good, you know, at that point, that. Initially, I would say that I've got a structure that is on the south side of 400 North, right at the intersection of where the fire hydrant's going to go. I would like to get water to that structure. At this point, I don't have a well. I've currently got a sewer hookup that I share with Mrs. Ramsey, but I mean, a water connection there is kind of of a priority interest to me. And then the lot, the space, the 680-foot of frontage that runs down before it runs into Mr. Summers' property, is a good potential space for some development. And to have, I don't know whether the capability is to have sewer access there, certainly water access would be a positive thing. I've not proposed anything to the county or anything along those lines at this point, but those are of interest to me. And then kind of a last outline thing, the structure that I speak of that's next to Mrs. Ramsey, you know, we own 20-some acres to the south of that. If there was, you know, any consideration that needed to be paid at this point in time, if there were, again, no plans, no, nothing's been worked on, so. Other than that, you guys all got my numbers and stuff? Be glad to.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Doug Schwartz, 640 West 400 North Angola, and the backyard, Main Golf and Cream Rain, we just wanted to mention here that we very much appreciate the work that Curry's done, and their openness and willingness to meet on the property, because I'm sure Mr. Deal, it's going to impact what we do there, and are grateful and very happy to say the park's going to be serviced by both water and sewer, so thank you.
Anybody else? Please.
Good evening. My name is Mindy Reneer. I live at 415 Lane 150, Lake James. I just have a quick follow-up question to Mr. Blackburn. If that water and sewer is going to go through that park, through that part that drains into Lake James, how frequently will it be monitored to ensure that there is no possible leak?
For the water side, we'll have a leak detection meter set up so that we can monitor if there's any water leakage through that area. There's a way that we can do that, basically, with valving on each side and flow through, and that may be something we can explore, you know, on the wastewater side as well. So, and also to...
Or can drain all year.
Yeah, I know, we don't want, we don't want the...
Is it a continuous monitor, or like, or is it something like, once a month, or once a year?
Yeah, I think it's not, it's not continuous per se, although there will be almost continuous monitoring with where the meters are located. So, and I just also wanted to note that when that main is initially installed, they, you know, they're pressure-tested, and there's a lot of quality control things that go into that process with the installation. But in terms of the leak detection, there's a leak detection metering system that can be done, so that you could go out and, you know, for a set period of time, you could go out and monitor that. But then also, the way we have meters set up, it would be pretty much a real-time, continuous way to meter it at where it leaves the Angola meter at 400, to where it enters Pocagans water system at the, what's now their end wellhouse.
So how the wastewater works as well?
Yes, yeah, similar to the water side of things, and since it's a pressure system as a whole, the telemetry that we're installing at each unit would know essentially that there's a leak and the fact that there'd be a loss of pressure or similar. And to play off Lori's statement, yeah, like high-quality control procedures when installing the pipe, pressure testing it, making sure there's no leaks that goes through an extensive process. But I definitely understand your concern on that, and we will definitely...
Is that something the DNR monitors independently?
Our current system, no.
Okay.
But this would be the newest technology, which we haven't had the opportunity to explore.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
On the last chance, anybody wants to speak, please do. All right, I don't hear anybody else wanting to address or ask questions. Lori, anything you'd like to do to follow up and close out the meeting?
Just thank everybody for being here tonight, we really appreciate it. We will be here after the meeting for a while, if you want to ask us individual questions about your properties. We have, we have the exhibits that were sent in the mail, we've got some updates on plans. We'd be happy to answer questions the best we can, so please don't hesitate to stay and talk with us, Nathan, Jill, Doug, and I'll all be available. And thank you for the great comments and concerns, they truly are appreciated. We're glad that you're here to express those. State Revolving Fund, I'm sure their engineering team will pay attention to those as well. So thank you, and thank you to the city for hosting.
Well, thank you for Dean Curry, and Wesler, and all the folks from Angola, and the DNR. Thank you for being here. Thank you for coming in and sharing your questions and your comments, we do appreciate it. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.